I can't do that. I'd like to call to order the regular meeting on October 2nd, 2017. Please join Councilmember Osborne in the Pledge Allegiance and Stay Standing for the invocation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please join me in prayer. Heavenly Father, it is said that my flesh and my heart may fail, but God is my strength of my heart and my portion forever. Today we come together broken and weary, disasters by nature and lives lost at the hand of a killer have lest left us sorrowful. We ask for your comfort, your love, and your strength through these tough times. We pray for the tormented minds that call out for your touch. Set them free, and please remind us that as we gather together, your presence among us will gladly be the healing grace that we need. May love bring us together and remind us that we are united and that we are stronger than the voices that try to separate us. Lord, may you continue to bless our city and its citizens, and may you protect the innocent, the military, and all who put their lives into harm's way. Thank you, Lord, for your presence, and as we look around and see all the helpers coming into play, may we be reminded of our faith in you. In your mighty name we pray. Amen.
Thank you, Councilmember Osborne, especially with recognizing our tragedies in Las Vegas. Okay, I look at the dais, and we're all here, and I know that Vice Mayor Campbell is on the telephone. Are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
I just want to thank you for taking over last meeting when I left the dais and on a very sudden departure, and I greatly appreciate it.
Oh, you're welcome. We're glad you're back, Mayor.
Thank you. We have two communication items tonight. The first one is a proclamation recognizing the October as Domestic Violence Awareness, and it's in for the entire month. Deputy Police Chief Rodriguez will say a few words, and then I will read a proclamation.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. First of all, I'd like to start by saying thank you, you know, for recognizing October as the Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and I would like to also bring up our Director of the New Life Center, Linda Bullhine. Hopefully, I said that correctly. We obviously have a great relationship with our New Life Center. We are there not only to help them with assisting them, but also to answer any questions and to deal with any of the things. So they've been a great partner with us since the inception. I've been here since that, so it's really nice to see the proclamation come forward today.
Do you like to say anything?
Just thank you, Mayor, Lord, and City Council. New Life Center's been in our neighborhood for 25 years, serving victims and survivors of domestic violence in the community as well, so we really appreciate that you've taken the time to issue this proclamation. Thank you.
Absolutely. You stand by me. You're part of this. Okay. All right. Domestic Violence Awareness Month, October 2017. Whereas October is recognized nationally as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, the City of Goodyear wants to demonstrate its support in ending this domestic violence and to support the numerous victims who are among us. And whereas Domestic Violence Month provides an opportunity, it's an opportunity to educate the public on the seriousness of domestic violence and prevalence of this epidemic. It surely is an epidemic in our lives. Whereas domestic violence is defined as an abusive behavior in a personal relationship that gives one member control and the power over another through physical, emotional, sexual, economic, physiological actions or threats. And whereas every family has the right to live free from violence, statistics reveal the city of Goodyear that our police receive an average of nearly 800 domestic violence-related calls to follow up on or investigate annually. It's too many. In the state of Arizona, there is an average of one death every three days. An act of domestic violence is witnessed by a child every 44 minutes. Whereas witnessing domestic violence makes children victims as well, often shaping them to grow up believing physical cruelty in a relationship is acceptable behavior. And organizations that offer service, like yours, to children and their families, they help break this generation cycle of youth. And whereas preventing instances of domestic violence is a concern, and preventing domestic violence is a community, a community responsibility. Finding solutions depends on involvement among the people throughout the community, including the city officials, including the citizens, the schools, and the churches. Whereas all citizens should become more aware of how they can prevent domestic violence by building communities where families flourish in a safe and nurturing environment. Now there be it resolved that I, Georgia Lord, the Mayor of the City of Goodyear, Arizona, do proclaim October 2017 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and urge the citizens of Goodyear to work together. Let's eliminate domestic violence in our community. Given under my hand in these free United States and the City of Goodyear on the second day of October 2017, of which I have caused the seal of the City of Goodyear to be affixed, and have made this proclamation public, thank you for your appearance. I wore this purple. I had to do it in mag this last week, and I actually, I went in a suit today of a different color, and I pulled on my assignment. It says proclamation. I immediately ran home and changed my clothes, so I hope it is in honor of it. You're welcome. All right, the second item, staff will provide a brief summary of the upcoming fall and winter events at the Goodyear Ballpark, and Dave Davenport, ballpark operation coordinator, to present.
Good evening, Mayor, Lord, members of the council. I just wanted to say thank you for allowing us the opportunity to present tonight on our upcoming events. That's one of our favorite topics. First of all, we love what we do. We're very passionate about it. Second of all, these sort of presentations help us to explain the most common question that we get asked over the course of a year is, well, what do you folks work on after spring training ends every year? And so we've had a very successful summer, building quality programming, and we're here to talk about it in a little bit of detail tonight. We're very excited that over the next four months, we'll be featuring both some of our annual favorites at the facility, as well as some brand-new events that are going to debut this year. All right, well, we'll launch right in with Fall Festival. This is one of our annual city signature events. Takes place every year on the third Saturday of October. We're anticipating a great event this year. Last year, we actually had a crowd in the park of just over 9,000 people, and we expect to have a similar crowd this year. The event runs from 5:00 p.m. until 9:00 p.m., but we do recommend that people get here a little bit early. It's when the best pumpkins are, of course, available in the pumpkin patch. Next up, on Saturday, November 11th, will be our annual Veterans Day tribute. This is another one of our city signature events. This year, the event will celebrate our community being recognized among the 2017 class of great American defense communities. So we're very excited to have been awarded that distinction, and we are anticipating a tribute speech by Brigadier General Brooks Leonard from Luke Air Force Base, who will also formally present the GADC award. The Flag Garden, one of the premier features of the event, will certainly return this year, and is just a special experience for our patrons, and is visually stunning once it's completed. So we hope everyone has an opportunity to join us for that. Next up is one of our brand-new events this year. This one we're very excited about. This is Christmas in Color. It is a drive-through Christmas light show. The show will feature over 1 million LED lights, several 50-foot-tall Christmas trees made entirely of lights, and then a 300-foot tunnel as a grand finale that people will be able to drive through. There's an interesting story behind this event that I felt would be worth sharing with the council tonight. The show's creator is a gentleman named Richard Holdman, and he was just a Christmas enthusiast, and he actually started this show in his house in Utah in 2006. And by 2009, he had actually was creating somewhat of a traffic problem in his neighborhood.
Yeah, he was.
People would come see it. So in 2010, he decided to take the plunge and make this his full-time line of work. Here we are, seven years later, and he's grown the show to incorporate several cities all throughout the Southwest, so we're very excited to have this show. When it's not Christmas season, Richard actually is sought after as a consultant. He's designed shows in Russia, Argentina, even South Korea for various events. And he was actually, his amazing success story was featured in Time Magazine in 2016 in the December issue, so it's a very high-quality event, and we're very excited to bring this to the City of Goodyear for the first time. This will take us right into another one of our city signature events. This will be our annual Home Plate for the Holidays celebration. We think that this, of course, will complement these two shows, the Christmas in Color and the Home Plate for the Holidays, will, of course, complement each other very well. Our plan is for the first weekend of December that we are going to turn the entire Goodyear Ballpark campus into a winter wonderland, Arizona-style, of course. We don't have our own snow, but we're happy to provide snow. We have a resource on that. This year's tree will be a 20-foot-tall coastal Douglas fir from the state of Oregon. And for the entertainment portion, we are partnering with the Anderson Institute of Performing Arts, and they will be bringing us very high-quality festive song and dance routines. All right, for our next event, this is also a brand-new event for us. We're very excited about this one, and I actually have a special guest presenter with me tonight. I want to introduce Mr. Tim Matichevitz, who is the organizer of the event. He's come to join us tonight to share just a little bit about the history of his event and how he's bringing it to the City of Goodyear.
Welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Jason. Mayor, Council, I tell you, we're so honored to have the opportunity to bring our event to the City of Goodyear. We are having a great time since starting our planning back in April, excuse me, probably further than that, probably back in March or January. And we're just really, really excited. We're growing. We're a growing event. We're a visual event, and we're looking to bring in almost 20,000 consumers. But overall, Hot Air Balloons and just the fixture of Hot Air Balloons has been very, very successful, and it's a great event for families. So we're honored again, Mayor and Council, and working with the Recreation Department, Jason and his team there. We're having a good time so far, so we're looking forward to seeing you again in January. Thank you.
Thank you so much for coming to Goodyear, right? Thank you.
The Arizona Balloon Classic is a weekend-long festival. The festivities will kick off on Friday evening, and then Saturday, there's programming throughout the entire day, and then there's also programming on Sunday morning as part of this festival. There's a couple really cool and interesting marquee elements to the event. The first one is something that's called a Her and Hound Contest, which is essentially a giant game of tag that takes place in the sky between the hot air balloons. Of course, they don't actually touch each other because that wouldn't be safe, but it's the same concept, and it's a really spectacular thing to witness. And then the second element, which you see in the picture above you, is the Friday and Saturday night evening glows, and those are really phenomenal to witness. Okay, moving on into the ticket office and team shop opening that's going to happen the second Saturday in January. This is also an annual event for us. It's the chance for fans to purchase tickets in person for the upcoming spring training season, as well as it's when our team shop opens, so people can get the latest and greatest in spring training merchandise. This is also an opportunity for us to showcase the facility, and we like to do so every year. The first thing that we do is if we have any brand-new or any featured signature concession items, we do that. This year was the official debut of the Bruce Kessman Taquito Dog. I don't know if anyone has had a chance to sample that. So that was a big hit this year. As a matter of fact, it even made it all the way back to Cleveland. They served it this summer at their ballpark, so. This year, we're going to add facility tours as part of the event. We're going to allow people the opportunity to come in and see portions of the facility that may not be accessible on a game day, like the press box and areas like that. Our schedule is being finalized right now. We anticipate the schedule this year being released on or about the first week of November, but for fans who can't wait until the second Saturday in January, they will, of course, have the option to purchase tickets online beginning on December 1st. Okay, so with that, we're moving to the end, and I just wanted to remind everyone, for information on any of these events or anything else that we do at Goodyear Ballpark, they can always visit our website, goodyearbp.com. And finally, I wanted to thank you again for allowing me the opportunity to present this evening and, I guess, open it up to any questions?
I'll stay right there. I'll see if you can. Councilman Stip?
These are, this is a great, I don't want to take away from anybody else, but the lineup is awesome, so I'm very excited about that.
Thank you.
One of the things that I think we, the narrative that we need to keep telling about our ballpark is if, and tell me if I'm wrong, are we not the most active or most-used spring training facility in all the Cactus League?
I believe that we are, and I believe that if we aren't, we will be, and that is something that we will continue to work on as a source of pride, absolutely. I mean, I think that the facility itself just lends itself to such a wide array of programming. I mean, we have, even outside the stadium, we have these beautiful parking lots, and they're just wide-open spaces. They're able to be programmed for so many different events.
And I think that's one of the things that I know I talk about a great deal because, you know, people are always concerned about the debt that the ball facility brings to us, but when we talk about the use that we get out of it, and it's not a facility that sits idle for 11 of the 12 months of the year, they start to take a little different view at it. So thank you for doing this, and keep up the good work.
It's our pleasure. We're happy.
Thank you for those remarks. And this, Councilman Lortano?
And I want to thank you as well because you really, I guess, analogy hit it out of the ballpark with this lineup, so. It's fabulous, and I'm sure they'll be well-attended, all of those events. I do have one question, though, if we're going to do something else in addition to those. So when the Cleveland Indians are playing the Arizona Diamondbacks in the World Series, are we going to do another watch party?
So the superstitions that you may have heard about the baseball world are not actually rumors. They're quite true, and so we have to be very tight-lipped about that at the moment.
Oh, you can't say that, okay. But let's just say it was very enjoyable last year.
Thank you. Thank you.
I'd just like, go ahead.
Yeah, I said thank you as well. I think it's a great program and lineup, and I'm glad that the Hot Air Balloon event that we took from their city is here as well, so that's good, too. Yeah, we're excited as well. Yeah, a lot of great events coming. Thank you.
Councilmember Osborne, do you have something?
Just to add, you know, the diversity of all the different events is pretty exciting, and I really think that there's something for everyone amongst all of them. Good job.
Thank you.
Yes, as your mayor, I'm just pleased. I mean, really, it's awesome. Let's put it that way, and I think when the crowd sees all those attractions, we have really grown. You have really grown, and so congratulations, Tim. We're looking forward to it. So can I say we're a Santa Fe? Isn't that where Santa Fe has all the balloons, and they're very popular? It's advertised? So we expect, we expect, oh, Albuquerque.
We'll be Albuquerque Junior this year.
It's close. It's all in the area, isn't it?
It's a neighbor, right?
Thank you. Did you see nobody correcting me out there? I have the expert in front of me. He didn't say that.
I thought about it, but I was like, no way.
The mayor appreciates it. Well, thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Again, we're looking forward to it. Congratulate everybody in your department. It's terrific. All right, now is the time for citizens who would like to address the City Council on any non-agenda item within the jurisdiction of the Goodyear City Council. Do we have any cards?
No, Mayor.
Anybody in the audience? All right, then let's go right on to the consent agenda. Will the city clerk please read the consent agenda items 6.1 and 6.2 by title only, please?
6.1, reschedule the regular council meeting normally scheduled on March 12, 2018 to March 5, 2018. The regular council meeting normally scheduled on May 28, 2018 to May 21, 2018. The regular council meeting normally scheduled on July 23, 2018 to July 2, 2018. The regular council meeting normally scheduled on August 13, 2018 to August 20, 2018. The regular council meeting normally scheduled on October 8, 2018 to October 1, 2018. The regular council meeting normally scheduled on November 12, 2018 to November 5, 2018. The regular council meeting normally scheduled on November 26, 2018 to November 19, 2018. The regular council meeting normally scheduled on December 24, 2018 to December 17, 2018, and approve the 2018 council meeting calendar. 6.2, approve the final plat for Pebble Creek, Phase 2, Unit 57, subject to a stipulation.
Thank you. And I know you, Council, are going to remember those numbers. I didn't hear head of the times we're going to have our meetings, but there will be a, I think you received it already, the notice on the changes. So does anyone in the public wish to remove an item from the consent agenda? Does anyone in the council wish to remove an item? All right, could I have a motion?
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilmember Osborne, a second from Councilwoman Bazillo. Roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
I think we just lost her.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Lortano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stip?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Mayor, Lord?
Aye. Are you back on, Council, Vice Mayor? No one will go on with that vote, okay? All right, we're going to go down to business, and just again, to remind council, refrain from asking questions till the staff presentations are complete, and there's a motion on the table. The first item on business is a public hearing to consider the amendment to Estoria Commons Plan area development. This public hearing was opened on September 25, 2017, and the regular meeting, and continued to this meeting. And now, we are going to be continuing to a second meeting, so we're going to need tonight is that we're going to need a motion and a second to continue. Now did I miss anything except the presentation? Go ahead. You're on.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. You just stated what I was going to state, that we, there are a few items still being worked out. They're not substantive, but we didn't want to bring incomplete information to City Council, so the applicant and staff discussed today and decided it was in the best interest to postpone the item once again to October 23. And I did just want to remind the City Council that we have not received any objections from the public to date, so staff felt comfortable bringing this recommendation forward to you.
Thank you very much. Now, do I have to visually bang on this, or am I right on it? No, thank you very much. Thank you for the information. Any questions? All right, then let's go on down to 7.1. Will the city clerk please read in the ordinance, number 17-1368, by title only? What am I doing wrong? I can tell you're looking at me.
We don't need to read the ordinance or the resolution. We just need to do the
Just need to vote on it.
Motion and a second and a vote, yes.
Okay, and is that the motion? I need a motion and a second vote. Thank you very much. Okay, could I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Councilwoman Bazillo, a motion, and I think the second was Councilwoman Hampton. Open for council discussion. Councilwoman Hampton.
Is this something on, I mean, is it our, are we waiting on us or them, or is it just a combination of things?
Thank you, Mayor, Lord, Councilmember Hampton. We are waiting for an item from the applicant.
All right, so let's vote on it. Roll call vote, please. That's what you have on this side? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Proposed? The ayes have it. So then I'm on tune again. I have a new schedule we're working out between the two of us, and I'm not doing as well as I should, but I'm working on it. So now, am I on which ordinance?
You're actually on item 7.2.
7 what?
Point 2.
Point 2, thank you very much. So we'll go right down to it. 7.2 on the items to consider approving the comprehensive sign package for the Goodyear City Hall. Katie's still here this time. I'll announce you. A planning manager will present. Katie?
Thank you once again, Mayor, members of council. So before you tonight is a comprehensive sign package for the City Hall property. It was, the signage for the property was originally approved by City Council in 2001, and it included both the Goodyear Financial Center, which is the building on the north side of the property, and the City Hall signage, which is the south side. From what we can tell, the comprehensive sign package consisted of a list of stipulations. There were new signs installed on site in 2015, and then as part of the City Hall art project, there were two new signs that we just received permits for. When we were reviewing those permits, we discovered this list of stipulations, and one of the stipulations was a prohibition on building mounted wall signage. So we realized we needed to amend the comprehensive sign package to allow that signage. Per the zoning ordinance, and this is the same for private businesses, too, if a comprehensive sign package meets the regulation of the zoning ordinance, we can approve it administratively. So for the new signage, we could have made those changes administratively, but then when we started delving deeper, we discovered that the signs approved in 2015 didn't meet the comprehensive sign package and also didn't meet those zoning ordinance, which means that we had to come to City Council to request changes. And just to show, so this is the City Hall property, and the Goodyear Financial property is the area to the north. So we have created a comprehensive sign package for the property, and I think the next slide maybe shows it a little better. So the first is a large monument sign, which is located on Litchfield Road, which is signified by the number 1, and that was one of the signs installed in 2015. Number 2, where there's two-directional signs indicated by the number 2s, which were also installed in 2015. An internal monument sign, which is this one here, indicated by the 3, which was installed in 2015. There are existing wall signage as well. The two new signage is an additional wall sign and then a sign on the art project that would be considered a wall sign as well. All of the signs do conform to the zoning ordinance with two exceptions, the directional signage and the internal monument sign, and you can see the current regulation compared to the proposed. It's one foot taller and four square feet larger, and the internal monument sign is about two and a half feet taller. The signage that was installed in 2015 was replacing existing signage, and that signage had been approved by council before the height. The square footage does appear to have been increased a little bit in 2015 over what was approved in 2001, but there was addresses and the city logo were included on the signs, so that appears to account for the increased signage. And so those signs are consistent with what was approved originally in 2001, so the only exceptions to the zoning ordinance are those ones that City Council did approve previously in 2001. But we did want to bring it to you since we're doing a whole new comprehensive sign package. This isn't inconsistent with what we've allowed on private property, private businesses. This change will not impact the Goodyear Financial Center, but they would absolutely be available to amend the sign package if they wanted to have wall signage or additional signage, and we would process it similarly to how we've processed this comprehensive sign package. At their regular meeting, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of the comprehensive sign package. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer questions, and I believe Walt is here representing the city as an applicant to answer questions as well.
Thank you, Katie. Are there speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right, then with the city clerk, excuse me, then could I have a motion and a second to approve the comprehensive sign package for Goodyear City Hall? Your motion?
So moved.
I heard a motion from Councilman Osborne. Do I hear a second? Did you like the second or the motion?
I mean, she's...
Motion, all right. And the second was from Councilwoman Lortano. Open for council discussion?
I like it.
Yeah. Oh, that was pretty good. That was freaking sweet, thank you. Any other comments? Councilman Stip.
Sorry, I'm struggling. Katie, how many... How much of this are we doing after the fact?
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Stip. There are one, two, three, four, five signs that are being approved after the fact.
We take a lot of effort...
Can you pull that up a little bit closer to talk? Thank you.
We take a lot of effort in looking at our processes, et cetera. So have we identified how this was able to happen so as to prevent this from happening in the future?
Excellent question, thank you very much. Yes, and we're not exactly sure how it happened. Those signs installed in 2015, I do want to state, they were installed legally because there is a provision in the zoning ordinance that government signs that serve a government purpose don't have to adhere to the zoning ordinance standards. They were also replacing existing, so it's possible that's why. But with all the conversations we've had with council on signage in the last couple of years, we've heard loud and clear that you want us to go through the same processes and follow the same rules as private businesses. So I do want to clarify that those signs weren't illegally installed. They were legal, we're just following our own processes. And yes, we do... We are working very hard with our internal teams. And they... Our internal projects are now going through pre-application meetings so we can identify these issues early on. So there are a lot of exciting improvements that are being made to ensure this kind of thing doesn't happen again.
Great, thank you for your answers.
Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
The ayes have it. Thank you, Katie. The next item is 7.3, is to consider to approving to becoming the municipal charter city of the... City of the White Tanks Conservancy. Rob Boer, Government Relation Manager, will be presenting. Rob?
Mayor and council. At this point, I know you've heard a lot from the White Tanks Conservancy. Several months ago, they were here and did a presentation as a communication item in a regular meeting. And then just recently, you also had a chance to discuss it during a work session. I should have a presentation coming up here. Laney? Or not? Sorry.
Somebody... Well, just wait. Somebody wanted to just go... We'll take a moment, we're not that big of a...
Well, it's an extremely brief presentation anyway, in light of the fact that you've heard from them a couple of times. So I can probably go ahead and talk through it. But we do have a... Todd Hornbeck is here from the White Tanks Conservancy. So if you do have any questions, he's able to answer those. But the action in front of you tonight would just be to go ahead and make that contribution to become a municipal charter member of the White Tanks Conservancy at the amount of $25,000. And that would be coming out of the council's special projects fund. So the... So the existing amount in that fund is $165,000. And so this would leave with... Actually, I believe it was 160... Yeah, $165,000. So this would leave you with... Actually, no, it was a... It leaves you with $138,000. So it must have been a little less than $165,000. But it would be a... I think you would have $138,000 left in the account after this contribution was made, sorry. If I had my presentation, it's on there.
Well, you wouldn't give me a chance to get it on there, so it's all right. It sounds very human. Especially for someone who's having a birthday today, so, okay.
Oh, happy birthday.
Thank you.
Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? All right. Could I please have a motion and a second to approve becoming a municipal charter city of the White Tanks Conservancy and make a one-time contribution of $25,000 from the City Council's special project fund? Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All right. I heard a motion from Councilwoman Lortano, and I think it's set from Councilwoman Stip. I mean, Councilwoman Bazillo. Did I get that right?
Yeah.
Or not?
Bazillo.
Second.
I got the Bazillo. I said the name. I said Bazillo. Open for council discussion.
I sent a quick question.
Councilwoman Hampton.
As well. No, I think it's a... I think it's a great conservancy. So this is a one-time, we're not getting... We don't have to be giving more money every year or anything like that. It's just a one-time for now. And then if we want to do more later, we will vote on that later.
Yeah, Mayor, Councilmember Hampton, they're actually not even asking for money in the future as far as, from what I understand. This is a one-time contribution that would make us a lifetime member of the conservancy.
Thank you.
Councilman Stip?
I... Ironically, each of the last two meetings regarding this subject was out of town. So I guess the only...
Can you pull that through? I'm sorry, I'm having trouble hearing you. I know your voice, you're having trouble with that tonight, so, thank you.
So rather than going through a whole litany of questions, and Councilmember Hampton hit on the one that I was concerned about. Just how is this different than the Estrella Mountain Regional Park? How is the White Tanks Conservatory different? You know, that... Each of those are within the boundaries of a municipality. So tell me how this is different.
So I'll probably ask Todd to come up and answer that question. But I would say that this is obviously specific to the White Tanks Mountains and preserving that and making sure the development doesn't interfere with, you know, that attraction and the trail connectivity as well as the visibility and, you know, making sure that we have that... That resource that continues to be preserved and, you know, that we're able to utilize that. But I'll ask Todd to go ahead and answer your question more specifically.
Rob, thank you, Mayor, council. Good evening. It's great to see you all again. Thank you very much, Councilman Stip, for the question. So conservancies are largely educational and public policy and regional planning enterprises, unless park, you know, maintenance. We have a stewardship program to do trail maintenance and things like that throughout the White Tank region over the course of time. But that's not generally the purview of a conservancy. So we have six focus areas for the conservancy, and Rob alluded to a few of those. Regional planning, stewardship, public policy and advocacy, outreach and community education, tourism and public attraction, and things of those sort. So it's much more of a coordinating body, like Estrella Park in the White Tank Mountains are home to another regional park, the White Tank Mountain Regional Park. And they are a charter member as well. So this is more around the lines of a collaboration for all of the players that have an interest in maintaining the preservation of the Sonoran Desert.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? Yes, Councilman Lortano.
And I think this is a great idea. And just so Councilwoman Stip hears... Because I had asked you afterwards if this is something we could get a 501-3C for Estrella too and get... Kind of like follow their mold. So this is something that, you know, once they have it up and running, we can get our community to follow for the other mountain preserves around here too, which I think would be a great idea. So it's a great idea, and it was laid out very well, so thank you.
Thank you so much for coming up and explaining that, I appreciate that.
My pleasure, thank you.
So we're ready to vote on this? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you very much, Rob.
Mayor and council, I know Todd just wanted to say a quick thank you to you after the...
Oh, sure.
Yeah, I just, as you all know, Mayor Beck is the co-chair of our board, and he wasn't able to be here this evening. So on behalf of Buckeye Mayor Jackie Beck and the other mayors, Mayor LeValle, Mayor Walcott, and Mayor Carlott in Peoria, we really thank you for joining us in this effort. These are really startup funds, to answer a question, councilman, to launch the enterprise. We're going to be getting into all kinds of recreational programming and other types of programming throughout the years. And so there'll be other opportunities to gather support for those efforts. But we couldn't have gotten started without our original charter members. So on behalf of the board, thank you very much. Really appreciate it. Thanks, Mayor.
All right, the 7.4 on business is to consider authorizing the sale of the City of Goodyear's General Obligation Bond Series 2017. Doug Sandstrom, Finance Director, will be presenting. Doug?
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. As I stated, I'm up here tonight to present to you or to receive authorization for the issuance of General Obligation Bond Series 2017. With us in the audience tonight is our financial advisors Larry Given and Janelle Gold, as well as our bond counsel Zach Sakis, if we get to any questions. The action for tonight is adopting Resolution 17825, which would authorize the issuance and sale of $25 million, $15,000 of general obligation bonds. These bonds are 20-year bonds, and they would be used to finance the construction, acquisition, equipment improvement of certain fire protection, water system, parks and recreation improvements. Basically, anything associated with the projects that I'm going to go forward and describe in detail. The debt service is paid through a secondary property tax, and it was factored into the fiscal year 18 property tax levy that was adopted with the fiscal year 18 budget. Go through a little bit of the background and history on bonds in the city. Couple of things that are required in order to issue bonds. One of them is voter authorization to do general obligation bonds. The City of Goodyear has had 1, 2, 3, 4, four bond elections that we still have outstanding bonds on. Total currently is $167.7 million of voter authorized yet unissued bonds. We will be touching on three areas of those, and that's the parks and recreation, fire protection in the last remaining portion of the water bonds. In addition to voter authorization, another test that we have to look at is our constitutional capacity. Under Arizona state law, you can issue bond capacity up to 20% of your net assessed valuation for items such as water, sewer, parks, economic development, public safety. And then there's a separate cap of 6% for all other things that don't fall into those categories. Those four fiscal year 17 are capacity that we have available. We do have a capacity to borrow up to $84.1 million under that 20% limit that these do fall under. So we're well within our debt capacity limitations and well within our voter authorized amounts as well. The projects that we will be looking at funding with these general obligation bonds are listed before you, basically summarized as fire stations, surface water treatment plant, and the 86-acre recreation project. The fire stations, the total project cost is five, just under $5.9 million. The vast majority of that is the replacement of Fire Station 181, which totals $4.8 million. Any of the additional funds up to that $5 million are associated with the programmed and budgeted renovations to Fire Stations 183 and 187. All remaining funds for that project come from the general fund. The surface water treatment plant is the 16 million gallon per day construction, connection of the distribution, transmission, and so on that connects us to the SRP canals. This is $7.5 million of the total $114 million project. The remaining funds of that will come from development impact fees, water operations, and a developer contribution. The final project that we're looking at is the 86-acre recreation campus. $38.5 million of that, 12.5 will be from this geo-bond issue. And then there will be an additional, couple of years from now, bond issue of about $4.7 million of general obligation bonds as well. The remaining funding for that $38 million total project comes from development impact fees as well as funds from the general fund. Everything that's included in that 86-acre recreation campus includes the aquatics facility, recreation center, 30-acre park, as well as onsite and offsite infrastructure improvements. In addition to looking at our constitutional capacity, our voter authorization, we also look at our financial policies and see how a debt issuance falls within our financial policies. The two major policies that are impacted by this issue and are most relevant are that our combined property tax rate cannot exceed $1.74. And that's the primary and secondary. If it exceeds that, we will not issue debt. This falls well within that, and I've got another slide, I'll go into a little bit more detail on that. Primary rate each year is maximized, and then we look at our secondary rate to see how much capacity we would have remaining. The second is enterprise funds shall be self-sufficient. As I stated, a small portion of this, 7.7... Just over $7 million is associated with the surface water treatment plant. Generally speaking, we have used water operations funds to pay for water. This thing has been well thought out and discussed during our budget process with the conclusion that this is essential to citywide growth and development and that we did need to take and look outside of water operations for that purpose and for that point. That exception to the overall policy of being self-sufficient was acknowledged during the adoption of our financial policies and budget this fiscal year. And it does underwater utilizes the last of remaining voter authorized debt associated with water. Going a little bit more detail into the policy on the income... On the property tax rate. Again, the total tax rate cannot exceed $1.74, or we would not move forward with issuance of additional debt. The primary rate is maximized, and then we look within our 10-year forecast to make sure that any debt we issue will keep us at that $1.74 or below. Currently, for fiscal year 18 adoption, the adopted rate of $1.7349, the primary, which can be used for any governmental purposes, is at $1.13. Secondary, which pays for existing general obligation debt, is at 46 cents. The issuance of these $25 million worth of bonds includes just under 14 cents of our total tax rate that was adopted for fiscal year 2018. The debt is structured to make sure that we live within our levy and within our forecasts and assumed growth within the net assessed valuation. Moving forward with the timeline on the bond issuance. Last week, we had a credit review with S&amp;P and Moody's, who are the two agencies that the City of Goodyear has historically used to review our credit ratings. Those calls went extremely well. One of the things I did want to bring up is it is our industry... The industry standard to have two ratings done. Recently, Fitch, which is the third party, has changed some of their practices on how they rate. And they are, any general obligation bonds within the state of Arizona due to a change in state law, they are upgrading those by two entire grade points. So under Fitch, our credit rating would be a double A, and they are dumping that up to a triple A across the board for any agencies. When we go out to the market, however, how credit rating agencies... Or how bond issuers generally do is they price the bonds based on the lowest rating. So the ratings of S&amp;P or Moody's would take precedence over that triple A rating because it is across the board, any general obligation, two times above. So we are not looking at getting a Fitch rating to go to that triple A rated, which is what we would anticipate being under that. Our ratings for S&amp;P are double A, and for Moody's is the same equivalent of an A, A2. So we had very good positive ratings reviews last week, and we do anticipate that those ratings will continue with this one. Council approval is this evening. We will get the official word on credit ratings next week. As soon as we get those, we'll share those with the entire council. We will sell and price the bonds at the end of October with the closing and the distribution in November. The first debt service payment then will be paid in June, due July 1. And that's important with the timing of our tax levy that we have already adopted and anticipated these items being placed into that. So what we are asking for this evening is approval of Resolution 171825, authorizing the sale and issuance of bonds totaling $25 million, $15,000. With that, I'll open up to any questions.
Thank you very much. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? Then would the city clerk please read Resolution number 17-1825 by title only, please?
Adopt Resolution number 17-1825, authorizing the issuance and sale of City of Goodyear, Arizona, General Obligation Bond Series 2017. Delegating the authority to approve certain matters with respect to the bonds, providing for the annual levy of a tax for the payment of the bonds, appointing a registrar and paying agent for the bonds, approving the form of certain documents, and authorizing completion, execution, and delivery thereof. Delegating the authority to approve and deem final a form of official statement, ratifying all actions taken and to be taken with respect to the bonds in furtherance of this resolution, and authorizing any necessary budget transfers related to the bonds and the projects financed thereby.
Thank you. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
A second?
Second.
I heard a motion from Councilman Stiff and a second by Councilman Osborne. Open for council discussion. I'll look this way first. Anybody on this side? Councilman Osborne?
Question of curiosity. So, I know you said that the 7 million, 515 would be the, the ending of the water system bonding authority, but I see there's 38, looks like 3,800 in there. Is that something that you keep in there strategically? What's the reason behind that?
No, the reason for that is bonds are generally, voter authorized bonds are generally issued in $5,000 increments. In early 2000, we issued some WIFA bonds utilizing it, and those were issued at a odd-dollar amount. So, it's 3,833 that will be on the books forever since voter authorization never goes away.
So, numbers aren't always correct?
Correct.
Okay. This side? Councilman Vazillo?
You know, I, I know I'm the outlier on this, and I under, and I can appreciate that, but I think in a city that has multiple water companies, for those that are north of 10 are already paying for capital improvements for their water infrastructure. In fact, the, the water company north of 10 is put in for rate, and I'm not sure what the final rate structure is. And I made my position known when we went through the budget process. I would prefer the wa, surface water treatment plant to be revenue bonds instead of geo-bonds because I believe it's unfair to put a property tax on those north of 10 that are paying for their water and capital infrastructure already through another utility companies. So, with that being said, I'll be voting against it.
Any other comments? All right, well, then, let's go to have a roll call vote, please. Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Vazillo?
Nay.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stiff?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
The motion carries 6-1. Thanks so much. Thank you for this great presentation. All right, 7.5 on business to consider approving the development agreement for the construction of the infra, infrastructure for Hudson Commons. Rebecca Zook, Director of Engineering, presenting. Rebecca?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm very pleased this evening to be before you to present for your consideration and approval, city-initiated development agreement for the Hudson Commons development. Essentially, the DA allows for the city to construct the Van Buren Road improvements that are associated with the CIP, all in one seamless timeline that would go from February of this, of 2018 to be completed in June of 2018, in advance of when the development would, would be moving forward. However, it does allow for the city to be recuperating those costs when building permits are pulled. And at this time, the estimated value is $650,000. However, I would like to add that within the development agreement, we have added that there be an opportunity to increase that amount if the actual dollar amount, once we go to bid and award the contract, is higher than the anticipated $650,000. In addition to that, that, that I would like to just say again, is that in advance of this, we intend to be moving to the city's construction piece from February to June. However, we would also like to state that the developer is going to move forward with a portion of the construction, which is the RID relocation located around 158th and Van Buren. So, that will take, take place in advance during the dryup, and per the development agreement, they must be complete by December 31st in order for us to be able to move forward in February. And with that, I would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody like to speak? All right, then, the city clerk, please read resolution number 17-1831 by title only, please.
Adopt resolution number 17-1831, approving a development agreement regarding the construction of certain infrastructure improvements for Hudson Commons, providing authorization and direction to take actions and execute documents necessary to carry out intent of the resolution and the development agreement regarding the construction of certain infrastructure improvements for Hudson Commons and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Could I have a motion?
It's all moved.
Second? I heard a motion by Councilman Stiff and a second by Councilman Hampton. Open for council discussion. Councilman Stiff?
The way that this whole development agreement has been framed has been about improving Van Buren, is that correct?
That is correct.
The southern border of this, of this development is Harrison.
Correct.
Have they talked about when that can, connection of Harrison Boulevard to Estrella Parkway may occur?
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmember Stiff. This developer is not obligated to build any portion of Harrison that is wholly owned by the City of Goodyear.
Oh, okay. Well, that's good to know. So, then, so then, the southern border, that was really my, is really at just to the north of that street alignment?
That is correct.
And then, last question is, have they given any indication when they may start, you know, moving dirt to start the residential component of this?
And ultimately, thank you, Councilmember Stiff, for the question. They're moving through the process. We just don't have any control over when they actually move forward, so that's why this development agreement is such a benefit to us. But they're clearly moving forward with this development.
But they haven't given any, any indication that it's three years, five years, 10 years, nothing?
I do not have a date for you, but we can certainly ask them and get back with you.
No, that, that's fine. Thank you.
Councilman Vazillo?
I like the idea of avoiding the scallop streets. I think it's great to work with the developer on that. Couple of questions. First one, I know there's some triggers on when they pay us back the money. Who monitors that to make sure that when those triggers kick in, that we're billing the actual developer to ensure we get those funds? Is somebody monitoring that development agreement to ensure that happens?
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmember. Yes, ultimately, that would be our new development agreement coordinator. We'll be monitoring those, absolutely.
Okay. Last question, and I know, I'm not sure if this one applies or not, but we have a cost-recovery development agreement fee that's been in place for about four years. Does this development agreement apply to that?
This development agreement was city-initiated. In fact, it was myself who initiated it so that we could ensure we could build the CIP.
So, there is an exemption. If we initiate it, then that fee would not be charged. Is that what I'm understanding?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, let's have a roll call vote, please. Oh, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I'm sorry, Councilman Hampton.
I had a hard time getting this thing to open when I was looking at it earlier, but this is going to be a two-lane.
Councilman Hampton, you pull that microphone up so we can hear you, okay?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
This is going to complete that into a two-lane on the south side, correct?
Correct.
Off of it to Estrella. Okay.
Yes, Councilmember Hampton, it will.
And then, the south side, we're not going to connect another road reliever for basis traffic yet, are we? That's, that'd be through the park, though, wouldn't it? The future park?
That is correct. That is not part of this. This essentially is Van Buren from Saraville to Estrella.
Yeah. All right, just curious, the southern, southern side as well. Okay, thank you.
Anything else? Okay, let's have a roll call vote, please. Councilmember Vazillo?
Aye.
Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stiff?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Motion carries 7-0. Thank you. Great presentation. Thank you. So, the next item is 7.6, to consider approving the development agreement for Estrella Parcel 9.1, and Rebecca Zook, Director of Engineering, is before us.
Thank you, Mayor and Councilmembers. Again, I'm pleased to present a development agreement before you tonight. This is for the approval, which is essentially a building permit hold for parcel EMR 9.1. This would allow for the developer to hold his building permits, essentially would not be released until all of the internal infrastructure is complete. Any offsite infrastructure would still be held with a bond, as is the normal process. Prior to this one this evening, we have come before you at least four other times with these building permit holds for three other parcels in EMR, 3.14, 7.5, 9.8, and for also at Sanctuary at Saraville. So, this would be just a duplicate of that development agreement. And with that, if you have any questions, I would be happy to answer.
Thank you very much. Are there any speaker cards?
No, Mayor.
Would anybody in the audience like to speak? Then, would the city clerk please read resolution number 17-1833 by title only?
Adopt resolution number 17-1833, approving development agreement for Estrella Parcel 9.1 regarding the development of approximately 22.91 acres, providing authorization and direction to take actions and execute documents necessary to carry out intent of resolution and the development agreement for Estrella Parcel 9.1 and providing for an effective date.
Thank you. Could I have a motion?
So moved.
I heard a motion by Councilman Loretano. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
From Councilman Hampton. Open for council discussion. Councilman Vazillo?
Back again with the same question. But on this one, it's mentioned in the staff analysis that the developer came to you asking for alternative financing mechanism. So, this one is being driven by the developer.
You're absolutely right, and thank you very much for the question. However, in this case, the, the fee that would be applied would be $3,500, which is based, which is based on the hours that the city spends, and whether that's plan review staff, the city attorney's staff, or in future cases, the development agreement staff spends on that. Since this was a template that was used previously five times, I believe, and we'd have to get confirmation from the city attorney's office, but I think it took approximately an hour's worth of staff time to use this same development agreement, so it would not have been appropriate to charge them the $3,500 for this.
Let me ask the city attorney this question. Is there any latitude when that ordinance was adopted to change it based on hours? My recollection, it was a flat number. My recollection could be wrong because it's been about four or five years ago.
Yeah, and I, I don't think I can answer off the top of my head. Generally, a fee should be roughly approximate to the staff time or other costs imposed, but I don't know that we had.
I don't think we did.
Anything built into the fee schedule to break it down on a case-by-case basis. And...
Ken, let me, let me ask you that. For now, it seems reasonable, but what I, I would like the attorney to please research because we're going to have more of these development agreements coming, and I don't want, the reason why we're not charging it is because it's a piggyback on something else. Because this thing's been in, this thing's been on the books for over four years, and I don't think we've collected anything since then, at least not that I can remember. So, I think we're going to need some clarity on that, and I would appreciate if you could just do the research for me to determine and give me a ruling on whether that is actually applicable based on hours, it's a set fee, is it new, who's driving it, can we waive it if we're driving it? That would be helpful to me, especially as we get more of these going forward. For right now, I'll, I'll buy that explanation.
Okay, so you'd like a, an opinion on that?
Yes, yes.
Yes, Councilman Stiff?
You know, Mr. Massey, I think we, I, I tend to agree with Councilmember Vazillo that, and again, I'm, I'm in support of this, of this particular item tonight, so don't get scared. But for the discussion about the fees, all of our fees are set. They're, they're set based on what we believe to be an approximation of the time spent. So, whether we spend, if, if we thought it was going to be 30 hours and we spend three, we still charge the same amount because there are going to be times when we spend 60 hours and we didn't collect the full amount. So, I, I'd like to make sure that, that we're, we're not building these case-by-case scenarios in any of our fees. Yeah, and I have a pretty good idea what my opinion's going to say to you, but I think you're right on track, that you do the fee study on the front end, and you take a rough approximation of, of what a piece of work generally entails, and you adopt the fee. So, I, I'm going to reserve the right. Sure. To answer differently after I go back and look at it, but my, my guess is, no, the fee is the fee, whether it takes an hour in this case, or, you know, multiple hours. Because you can't, you can't adopt a fee schedule on a, on a individual piece of work basis. Right, and, and I think, you know, we, we need to be aware of that. You know, I'm going to use the analogy, it's like a, like the mechanic's time book. When it tells you it's 2.5 hours to take out a water pump, it's 2.5 hours. That's what you get charged for, whether it took them an hour and a half, or took them three hours, you get charged 2.5. So, I'd like to make sure that we've got that incorporated in the answer, so thanks.
Any other questions? All right, let's have a roll call vote, please. Councilmember Loretano?
Aye.
Councilmember Stiff?
Aye.
Councilmember Hampton?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Campbell?
Aye.
Councilmember Osborne?
Aye.
Councilmember Vazillo?
I'm going to go along with, right now, we have a aye.
Mayor Lord?
Aye.
Motion carries. Rebecca, thank you very much. All right, we're at the information items. So, does council have anything to report, accommodations, current events, anything you want to report? Councilman Loretano?
I, I know there's a lot going on, but I'll just speak about...
No, say, you know, this is your time.
That's okay. The ballet up at Estrella was absolutely wonderful. Thank our Arts and Culture Committee and the Arizona Ballet in Newland for doing that, and it was a beautiful night, and I think, I don't know how many people, but were, how many people were there? Because the people from the ballet said they were...
4,500, which was about 1,000 more than last year.
They said we rivaled what they got at Tempe Town Lake, so I thought that was very impressive. So, great job.
That is impressive. Any others? Councilman Hampton?
Yeah, I also, that same night, I went to the Roundup, which was a, it was pretty packed there as well. Saw the mayor there, and, yeah, I think the feedback was that they need twice as many food trucks because of the lines were so long there. So, so, yeah, another great, and they're raising money for charity, and...
I think it was 7,500?
It's too bad it was on the same night to compete with the ballet, but it sounded like the ballet did a good job.
I was there too with, excuse me, anybody else?
I also visited the Cancer Center Community Charity, and they're looking at coming and helping the West Valley, specifically Goodyear. And what they do is they, they help anybody dealing with cancer and also their families and the whole support scenario. They contract out with Cancer Center Treatment and all the other places, so that's pretty, pretty neat to get a tour of that, so.
Absolutely. Well, I think I heard the Mavericks, what, 7,500?
7,400, Mayor.
7,400, and these are young men, and, and they're, you know, under 40, and they just pick something every year, and they have an event, and they donate it all to charity. So, it's, it's just a really, they're just a great group and work very hard at it. I agree, the ballet under the Stars was superb. Anybody that missed it this year, the performance seemed to be more exuberant than last year and more costume changes, and if you stood on the stage and you looked at the people, you saw them standing on the sidewalk, and then you saw left and right, solid where the grass area where people were. It was just magnificent, and we need to thank our art commission for this, or it's just great what they're doing. I would, I would participate, I went to Tippecop for Special Olympics, and it was very successful, and they're so good to the young athletes, and, and it was a day of really lots of smiles, and they had their car there, and they had everything out in front for the kids to look at and for the adults. So, a lot of parents were there of the children, so that was special. I also was on a valley partnership panel with some of the other mayors this week, and then, the, of course, we're talking about the Roundup, and you didn't explain this on the Roundup, but the food trucks. The entire stadium had food trucks around the football area, I mean, around baseball area, sorry, and it was spectacular, and it was so crowded, and people were standing in 15, 20 in a line and never said a peep, smiled and laughed and had a good time. Well, that tells you something. Didn't get one text, one email this morning, and anybody complaining, so I'm going to tell you, that's a, that's a real tribute to a great job done. So, does the city manager have any report?
Mayor members of the council, just a couple other things. Thank you for the recognition on the programs that went on this weekend, very busy weekend. And I'll, I'll send my weekly to you, a little bit more about each of those events so you have it handy. But I would also point out on the ballet under the Stars, huge thank you to the departments that helped support that as well. So, that was Goodyear PD Fire, Sanitation, Streets, Parks, Parks and Recreation, in addition to our, our arts, art staff. So, very nice event. On the Tippecop, we have some bragging rights. There were three cities that, you know, that were part of this. Haymaker Restaurant actually opened up its three facilities in Goodyear, Peoria, and Phoenix. And in Goodyear, we had the highest showing of monetary support raised...
Just give them a hand for that.
Raised just, just over $3,000, and as long as we're bragging, I would say Peoria was about just under 2,400, and Phoenix PD 2,000. Now, while we talk about bragging rights, the, the most important thing is the total of 7,400 from these three locations, it really benefits the Special and Olympians, so I'm very excited about that, and then certainly the, the part... And then certainly the part that our, our department played. And a reminder, you'll be getting information on the strategic planning retreat. Again, as a reminder, that's Friday, October 13th, 11:30 to 3:30. And then the second half of that, Saturday, October 14th, 1 to 5. So we're, we'll be getting the agenda out to council. There will be a brief survey that goes out from our facilitator for, for this retreat as well. So that'll be coming out this week for mayor and council. And...
Yep, one summary here. I'll have to come back to inquiry from Councilman Stiff and Councilman Pizzillo.
I did have a couple of follow-up items.
Okay, go ahead.
So Mayor, if I may, the Hudson Commons timeline, if we can find out if they do have a schedule that we can, and we'll share that. And certainly the legal opinion that was talked about on development fee applications. Last thing, and I guess it's announcement, I just, not asking him to come up here, but Philip Cochran has joined us. You just raise your hand back there, Philip. He is our new development agreement coordinator and is, and this is first week on the, on the job. He actually started Friday, so if you get a chance, he, he sits in the wing where our management assistants are.
Great, I met him this morning. Welcome, welcome to Goodyear again. I did forget one thing and I want to point it out, but everybody knows Paul Smiley, right? His great business. Well, he, he received the Phoenix Business Journal 2017 Most Admired Leaders. And I was able, he invited me to be at his table and it's a real pleasure. So I charge you, council, give him a call, congratulate him. That's a business in our city that continues to grow. So anything else? Anything for future items? Yes, Councilman Stiff?
Well, on that note, Mayor, maybe we should do a resolution for him, bring him up.
Sounds good to me.
He's a, he's a huge resource in, in this city and I think we should recognize that.
Thank you for the suggestion.
So I, I had three items that are kind of follow-up, I think. First was the agenda. Will we get that before Friday?
Yes.
Okay, the agenda for the strategic planning thing. And then the other follow-up item or inquiry of staff, if you will, is the, we've, myself or mostly Jessica through me have been working with a constituent about the weed problem that is occurring on McDowell Road that apparently is not within our city. I received an email back from this resident today that whatever we're doing isn't working. The weeds have gotten way out of control. So if we can follow up and Jessica's got his contact info. I just got the email while we were sitting here tonight. So if we can kind of move that along a little bit and try to kick it a little farther and a little faster, I think he uses the phrase, something to the, the wheels of government are turning, turn slowly and, but at least they're turning. So I mean, he's optimistic, but I think wheels of government are moving, albeit slowly is what he says. So if we can get some follow-up on that, I'd appreciate it. And then the, the other follow-up question that I have is, is I'd like to know, and it could wait until Friday, what are we doing with the traffic control issues around basis and with their expansion? Hearing a lot about that from the community and we're hearing not a lot about it from the staff. And then I do have future agenda item when you want to get to that.
Anything else? Yes, Councilman Pizzillo?
Is our meeting on the 14th, the Saturday? Is it 1 to 5 or 12 to 4? Because we had gotten something...
It is, yes, Saturday, October 14th is actually 1 to 5.
Okay, because I had gotten something that said they were talking about seeing if we could scoot it up a little. That's the only reason why I asked.
You're, you're correct. There may, and I think that was going around today, that maybe tweaked slightly as a, but we would have to make sure that that works with council.
Okay, okay. I was just curious, because when I heard the one, I thought maybe it was getting tweaked a little bit.
And it may, I know the mayor had a...
I sort of got in on that a little bit.
Conflict that, that even, well, not a conflict, but something she has to get to. So we are looking at, at slight tweak to that schedule perhaps.
I'm being honored and it would be nice if I showed up when they asked me to show up, so.
Oh, that's what it is.
Yeah.
Yeah, I know you are, so you're going to, so that's why I asked. I need a little bit more time to go home and change clothes, so, thank you. All right. Does anyone want anything on the future agenda? So let's go that one. So, Councilman Stiff?
Okay. Future agenda item, we're, haven't heard much about the, and we talked about it tonight, the relocation of Station 181. I'd actually like to see that on a work session, to have some discussion about what is happening with that, what we're going to do, look at by locating it in the proposed area that we were talking, that we were notified of in a manager's report a month or so ago. I'd like to see the, what the response maps look like from there as opposed to somewhere maybe a little more centrally located. I think we should have a discussion on that.
Do you need another one? Another, I mean, I'll second that.
I'll be your third. All right, would you speak in the microphone, young lady, Sarah?
I will be your third.
That's fine. Okay. So we had two other people. All right. Now, Councilman Pizzillo, you have something.
Yeah, it's a follow-up. We had talked before we went out about the hands-free discussion for the agenda. I know there was a lot of research, I understand that, because there's a lot of stuff going on in various different jurisdictions. Are we looking sometime in October?
So, thank you, Councilmember Pizzillo. We actually, that presentation is near finalization, but we're just looking at the date that works best.